Welcome to our final budget hearing this September 26, 2017. I'll call this meeting to order and we're going to have our invocation by Pastor Tom Porter. If you would like to introduce him, please stand.
We have Pastor Tom Porter here from Temple Baptist Church. It's a wonderful church in North Brevard District 1 County and so it's an honor to have you here.
Thank you. Let us pray. Heavenly Father, we thank you that your word tells us to let everything be done decently and in order. Father, we thank you for the men and women, our commissioners, Lord. And Father, I pray that you would guide them tonight and, Lord, we serve others. That's what we're here for. We thank you for Brevard County and we thank you as they plan the budget for the upcoming year that, Lord, the funds will be there and things that need to be completed will get completed, get done, and that, Father, that we'll be able to continue to serve this wonderful group of people in this county. In Jesus' name we pray these things. Amen.
Amen. Thank you.
Please follow me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we're going to have the presentation of the revised tentative fiscal year 2017-2018. Milage rates. Turn this over to Mr. Abate.
Mr. Chairman and members of the Board, 1A1 allows for the reading of the tentative aggregate operating milage rate to fund the portion of the fiscal year 2017-2018 budget that is supported by property taxes. At this time, I would ask the Budget Office read into the record the tentative aggregate milage rate for the fiscal year 2017-2018.
Mr. Chairman and members of the Board, the aggregate tentative milage rate for the fiscal year 2017-2018 budget is 6.3268 mils. This represents an increase of 0.48 percent from the aggregate rollback rate of 6.2967
Okay, we'll hear Agenda Item 1A2.
Mr. Chairman and members of the Board, 1A2 allows for the public to comment on the county budget for fiscal year 2017-2018. Before we begin public comment, I would ask that the Budget Office read into the record the fiscal year 2017-2018 budget.
The fiscal year 2017-2018 budget is $1,170,704,359. The budget represents a decrease of $57,118,185 or 4.65 percent less than the fiscal year 2016-2017 current budget of $1,227,000... I'm sorry, $1,227,822,544.
Mr. Chairman, we are now ready to accept public comments on the budget for fiscal year 2017-2018.
Thank you, Mr. Abate, and our first speaker will be Nicholas Tumbleetes. State your name and address, sir.
Yes. Nicholas Tumbleetes, 812 Handsome Cab Lane in Melbourne. Good evening. Now, to quote Shakespeare, "Mischief thou art afoot." Two of you were elected in 2014, three of you were elected last year. You're all supposedly Republicans, although with some of you, we're not so sure. So I'd like to do a show of hands here. Please raise your hand if you campaigned for your current job by telling voters that you'd raise their taxes. That's what I thought. Let the records show that there were no hands up. And why didn't you? Because if you had campaigned in this conservative county on raising taxes, the voters would have run you out of town on a rail. And you know that. You are so ashamed of raising taxes, and rightfully so, that you're actually claiming this budget is a tax cut. That is fake news. That is a scam, like a Nigerian prince offering you his inheritance. The size of the budget doesn't determine whether taxes are going up or down, nor does the milage rate. When there's a rise in the total amount of revenue leaving our pockets and going into yours, that is a tax increase, period. Thank goodness Florida has truth in milage laws, because those are kind of like lie detectors for politicians. I love those laws. Besides, you don't need more revenue because you already abused the existing revenue that you have. Each year, you spend millions in taxpayer money to line the pockets of wealthy CEOs through the Economic Development Commission and CRAs. Meanwhile, people in this county are struggling. They're struggling to pay their bills, struggling to pay their tuition, struggling to put food on the table, and it is morally wrong to steal from them and reward these rich cronies. So until you end corporate welfare here in this county, no one should believe a word you have to say about budgets and taxes. It's simply not credible. I encourage you to think twice about what you're doing. Two of you are on the ballot next year and there are already campaigns underway to expose your records. Prove you deserve to keep your jobs. Give us a budget without a tax hike. And remember one thing, the people who put you into these jobs have the ability to vote you out, and we will do so if you approve this budget. Thank you.
Name and address, please.
Richard Charbonneau, Satellite Beach. When we were campaigning, I campaigned with one of you up here, and we both campaigned on the same thing. We said that you can play all kinds of games with, you know, tax rate or tax rise or milage rates or whatever, but I said, and one of us also, one of the commissioners up here said, that the measurement was, is there more out of my pocket this year than there was last year? And that's a tax raise, no matter what you call it. Well, I own nine properties in Brevard County, and I added them up because I got my notice, and guess what? It's more coming than was, so that's a tax rise, at least wise it is to me. And then the other thing that I noticed is the, Florida has some kind of a law about posting tax increase somewheres, and in the Florida Today, there was a post-notice of that taxes are going up. Now, one commissioner says taxes are going up. Mr. Tobias and Mr. Smith, Commissioner Smith says that taxes are going down. They both wrote an editorial on it. That would be like saying, Mr. Smith says it's daylight out, and Mr. Smith says it's nighttime out. I mean, you can't be half-pregnant. Either taxes are going up or taxes are going down. And I've got quite a bit of time here. Don't run out the time on your answer, but, and S comes before T, so I'll let, you know, Commissioner Smith say why he thinks taxes are going down. Go ahead. Okay.
I have all the time I want to speak. You have five minutes, you have two minutes and 50 seconds left.
Well, I think in maybe a minute or so, you could probably do it.
I'm not responding to you, so are you going to step down? Are you going to go back to your seat, or are you done?
So you're refusing the answer? Okay, Commissioner, let that go as recorded to the record that Commissioner Smith refuses to respond. Commissioner Tobias, how do you believe that they're going up?
Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
Thank you for your comment, and I think those are important questions that we can answer later on instead of, instead of right now.
Well, yeah, this isn't a give and take. This is, this is comment period, and you, sir, have the floor. So you can comment. You have another two minutes and two seconds to comment.
Well, that was the question I had, so I'll remain silent for two minutes. How about that?
Okay, thank you for your candor and thank you for your kind remarks. That is the last of our cards. I would, since Mr. Charbonneau brought up about his personal taxes, I took the liberty, since it is public notice, I mean, public record, that the property taxes on his personal home, county taxes only, doesn't include school board or any other, just county taxes, actually went down $73.88. And the other eight properties that he's talking about increased in value $133,720, and his additional county taxes for those properties went up a whopping $212. So that's on the record. Mr. Abate.
Mr. Chairman and members of the Board, it is recommended that the Board of County Commissioners discuss the budget. Since the Board must adopt the milages and related budgets separately, comments and motions concerning the individual tax levies can also be made at the time each milage is
Comments from the Board? Okay, we'll go on to Agenda Item 1A3.
Mr. Chairman and members of the Board, for 1A3, the Budget Office personnel will now read into the record the milage and related ad valorem revenue for each taxing authority. Following the reading of each tax levy, it is recommended that the Chair entertain a motion for approval of that milage.
The general fund countywide tentative milage for fiscal year 2017-2018 is 4.1550. This represents a 1.48 percent increase when compared to the rollback milage of 4.0943, generating ad valorem revenue of $143,259,647.
I'll entertain a motion to accept that.
I move to approve.
Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion to approve and a second. Anyone wish to vote no? Pass is 5-0.
For the Brevard Library District, the fiscal year 2017-2018 tentative milage is 0.4982, which is a 1.76 percent increase over the rollback milage of 0.4896, generating
Do we have a motion to approve?
Move to approve.
We have a motion to approve. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion to approve and a second. Anyone wish to vote no? Pass is 5-0.
For the Brevard mosquito control, the fiscal year 2017-2018 tentative milage is 0.1968, which is a 1.76 percent increase when compared to the rollback rate of 0.1934, generating ad valorem revenue of $6,841,346.
I'll accept a motion to approve. Second?
Second.
We have a motion to approve and a second. Anyone wish to vote no? Pass is 5-0.
For the fire control MSCU, the fiscal year 2017-2018 tentative milage is 0.6816, which is a 3.02 percent decrease from the rollback milage of 0.7028, which will generate
Do we have a motion to approve? We do, we have a second. We have a motion to approve and a second. Anyone wish to vote no? Pass is 5-0.
The Recreation District 1 MSTU fiscal year 2017-2018 tentative milage is 0.6308, which represents a 15.80 percent decrease when compared to the rollback milage rate of 0.7492, generating $2,794,716.
Do we have a motion to approve?
Move to approve.
We have a motion to approve. Do we have a second? We have a motion and a second. Anyone wish to vote no? Pass is 5-0.
For the Recreation District 4 Maintenance, the fiscal year 2017-2018 tentative milage is 0.7114, representing a 3.12 percent increase over the rollback milage of 0.6899, which will generate $2,623,905 of ad valorem revenue.
Do we have a motion to approve? And a second? We have a motion to approve and a second. Anyone wish to vote no?
I do.
We have one nay and four yes. Pass is 4-0, Commissioner Tobias being the nay vote.
For the Tyco Airport Authority, the fiscal year 2017-2018 tentative milage is 0.0000, which represents no change from the rollback milage rate of zero, generating zero dollars.
Move to approve.
Okay, we have a motion to approve zero and a second to approve zero. Anyone wish to vote no? Zero. Pass is 5-0.
For the Law Enforcement MSTU, the fiscal year 2017-2018 tentative milage is 1.1438, which represents a 4.7 percent decrease from the rollback milage of 1.2002, which will generate $18,091,808.
Move to approve.
We have a move, motion to approve. Do we have a second? We have a motion and a second. Anyone wish to vote no? Pass is 5-0.
For the Roden Bridge District 1 MSTU, the fiscal year 2017-2018 tentative milage is 0.6870, which is a 21.38 percent decrease when compared to the rollback milage of 0.8738, generating $2,56,600.
Do we have a motion to approve?
Move to approve.
We have a motion to approve. Do we have a second? We have a second. Anyone wish to vote no?
I do. I'd like to say why.
You have the floor.
I would just say that these are the last, these are the last places that we should be dropping the milage rate below the rollback rate, when we have other areas that we're increasing it. To drop an MSTU in District 1 down 20 percent doesn't seem like a smart thing to do.
Any other comments from the Board? Okay. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Nay?
Nay.
Pass is 4-1. Commissioner Isnardi being the nay vote.
Roden Bridge District 2 MSTU has a tentative milage for fiscal year 2017-2018 of 0.2597, which represents a 2.41 percent increase from the rollback milage of 0.2536, generating $976,776 in ad valorem revenue.
Move to approve.
We have a motion to approve. Do we have a second? We have a second. Anyone wish to vote no? Pass is 5-0.
The Roden Bridge District 3 MSTU fiscal year 2017-2018 tentative milage is 0.2715, which is a 1.84 percent increase from the rollback rate of 0.2666, generating $462,300 in ad valorem revenue.
Do we have a motion to approve? We have a motion to approve. Do we have a second? We have a second. Anyone wish to vote no? Pass is 5-0.
For the Roden Bridge District 4 MSTU, the fiscal year 2017-2018 tentative milage is 0.2782, representing a 1.61 percent increase from the rollback milage of 0.2738, generating $1,293,843 in ad valorem revenue.
Do we have a motion to approve?
Move to approve.
And do we have a second? We have a motion to approve and a second. Anyone wish to vote no? Pass is 5-0.
For the Roden Bridge District 5 MSTU, the fiscal year 2017-2018 tentative milage is 0.3979, which represents a 2.76 percent decrease from the rollback milage of 0.4092, generating $554,872.
Do we have a motion to approve? We have a motion to approve. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We have, it passes 4-1. We have one nay vote. Commissioner Isnardi.
For Roden Bridge District 4 MSTU beaches, the fiscal year 2017-2018 tentative milage is 0.2667, representing a 1.87 percent increase from the rollback milage of 0.2681, which will generate $1,051,755.
Do we have a motion to approve? We have two motions to approve. We have a motion to approve by Commissioner Barfield and a second by Commissioner Pritchett. Anyone wish to vote no? Pass is 5-0.
Point of clarification, the rollback rate on that milage rate was 0.2618. It was just, so for the Roden Bridge District 4 MSTU, Merritt Island South, the fiscal year 2017-2018 tentative milage is 0.1327, which is a 2.39 percent increase when compared to the rollback milage of 0.1296, generating $20,689.
So moved.
We have a motion to approve?
Second.
And a second. Anyone wish to vote no? Pass is 5-0.
For the environmentally endangered lands 2004, the fiscal year 2017-2018 tentative milage is 0.0617, which is a 13.42 percent increase from the rollback rate of 0.0544, generating $2,144,873.
Do we have a motion to approve? We have a motion to approve. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Anyone wish to vote no?
I do.
Pass is 4-1. Commissioner Tobias being the no vote.
For the Port St. John Canaveral Groves Recreation MSTU, the fiscal year 1718 tentative milage is 0.3509, which is a 1.36 percent increase from the rollback rate of 0.3462, generating $499,882.
Do we have a motion to approve? We have a motion to approve. Do we have a second? We have a second. Anyone wish to vote no? Pass is 5-0.
For the North Brevard Recreation District, the fiscal year 2017-2018 tentative milage is 0.2230, which is a 28.68 percent increase from the rollback milage of 0.1733, generating
Do we have a motion to approve?
So moved.
And do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Anyone wish to vote no?
I do.
Pass is 3-2. No votes. Commissioner Tobias and Commissioner Isnardi.
For the Merritt Island Recreation MSTU, the fiscal year 2017-2018 tentative milage is 0.3223, which is a 9.14 percent increase from the rollback rate of 0.2953, generating $973,084 in ad valorem revenue.
Do we have a motion to approve? Do we have a second? We have a motion and a second. Anyone wish to vote no?
I do.
Pass is 3-2. No votes being Commissioner Tobias and Commissioner Isnardi.
For the South Brevard Recreation District, the fiscal year 2017-2018 tentative milage is 0.2956, which is a 29.65 percent increase from the rollback rate of 0.2280, generating
Do we have a motion to approve?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those wishing to vote no? Anyone wishing to vote no?
I do.
Me too.
Okay, we have, pass is 3-2. No votes being Commissioner Tobias and Commissioner Isnardi.
The next section are our debt service milages. For the environmentally endangered land 2004 debt service, the fiscal year 2017-2018 tentative milage is 0.0908, which represents a 5.81 percent decrease when compared to the rollback milage of 0.0964, generating $3,172,694.
Do we have a motion to approve? We have a motion to approve. Do we have a second? We have a second. Anyone wish to vote no? Pass is 5-0.
For the Port St. John Canaveral Groves Recreation MSTU debt service, the fiscal year 2017-2018 tentative milage is 0.000, representing no change from the rollback rate of 0.000, generating zero dollars.
So moved. Second.
We have a motion to approve zero and a second to approve zero. Anyone wish to vote no on zero? Pass is 5-0.
For the North Brevard Recreation District debt, the fiscal year 2017-2018 tentative milage is 0.5770, which is a 0.4 percent decrease from the rollback rate of 0.5793, generating $1,553,119.
Do we have a motion to approve? We have a motion to approve. Do we have a second?
Second.
And we have a second. Anyone wish to vote no? Pass is 5-0.
The Merritt Island Recreation MSTU debt for fiscal year 2017-2018 has a tentative milage of 0.4777, representing a 3.74 percent increase from the rollback milage of 0.4605, generating $1,443,942.
Do we have a motion to approve? We have a motion to approve. Do we have a second? We have a motion and a second. Anyone wish to vote no?
I do.
Pass is 4-1. Commissioner Isnardi being the no vote.
For the South Brevard Recreation District debt, the fiscal year 2017-2018 tentative milage is 0.3044, which is a 7.22 percent decrease from the rollback rate of 0.3281, generating $6,92,230.
Do we have a motion to approve? We have a motion to approve. Do we have a second?
Second.
And we have a second. Anyone wish to vote no? Pass is 5-0. Passes 5-0.
Mr. Chairman and members of the board, the Budget Office will announce the recomputed aggregate millage and the change represented by that recomputed millage from the aggregate rollback millage.
Mr. Chairman and members of the board, the aggregate millage rate for fiscal year 2017-2018 budget is 6.3268 mils. This represents an increase of 0.48% from the aggregate rollback rate of 6.2967.
Mr. Chairman and members of the board, the Budget Office will read into the record the resolution establishing the county's final millages for fiscal year 2017-2018. Following the reading of the resolution, it is recommended that the chair entertain a motion for approval of the resolution.
A resolution to adopt final millages pursuant to Chapter 200 Florida statutes, authorizing the Board of County Commissioners to adopt final millages for fiscal year 2017-2018 and providing an effective date. The Board of County Commissioners, Brevard County, Florida, is taxing authority for the taxing entities identified in Exhibit A, which is attached hereto and made a part hereof by this reference, does hereby levy the millages specified in Exhibit A and does hereby state the percentage by which the aggregate millage to be levied is a change from the rollback aggregate millage.
I will entertain a motion to approve the resolution.
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Does anyone wish to vote no?
I do.
Passes 4-1. Commissioner Tobias being the no vote. Agenda Item 1A4.
Mr. Chairman and members of the board, for Agenda Item 1A4, the Budget Office will read into the record the resolution adopting the county's total budget for fiscal year Following the reading of the resolution, it is recommended that the chair entertain a motion for approval of the resolution.
A resolution to adopt the final budget pursuant to Chapter 200 Florida statutes, authorizing the Board of County Commissioners to adopt the final operating and capital budget for fiscal year 2017-2018 and providing for an effective date. The Board of County Commissioners, Brevard County, Florida, is taxing and governing authority, does hereby adopt an operating and capital budget for the fiscal year beginning October 1st, 2017, and ending September 30th, 2018, in the amount of $1,170,704,359.
I will entertain a motion to approve the resolution.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Tobias.
Is now the appropriate time to, for discussion for questions concerning the adoption of this resolution?
Pass that on to Mr. Robate.
Yes.
You have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Ms. Hayes, does this budget rely on, according to Florida Statute 200.065, a tax increase of more than $1 million?
Florida statute states that if your aggregate adopted millage rate is more than the aggregate rollback rate, then the taxing authority is required to advertise a notice of proposed tax increase. And so the millages adopted, the aggregate rate did exceed the rollback rate, although it was lower than the prior year current millage rate.
For, point of clarification, was that a yes or a no?
Yes.
Thank you. Follow-up. What percentage of homeowners, not including new construction, will see an increase because should this budget be adopted?
Give me just a moment. We, the Budget Office did an analysis looking only at homesteaded properties where the assessed value fell within the Save Our Homes cap. So in other words, we excluded those properties which, where the assessed value would have gone up more than 2.10%, which could have been caused for a variety of factors. Either they weren't included under the homestead exemption, or if the property were sold, or if they had added on. There's a variety of reasons why the assessed value could have increased. But we did isolate that data, and we looked again only at those homesteaded properties. And it was approximately 76% saw either a decrease in their county taxes or no change in the county taxes.
So follow-up. I appreciate the inverse there, but I'm going to work it the other way around. So 24%, if 76% saw a decrease, 24% saw an increase. Is that a fair assessment?
Yes, that's correct.
And a follow-up. While 76% saw a decrease or stayed the same, had this board decided to not increase taxes according to Florida Statute 200.065, would those 76% have seen a greater decrease in their taxes? Is that a fair assessment as well?
It depends on which millage rates would have been reduced. Depending on the location where the property owner, where the property is, that's what determines which millage rates they pay, which millages they pay. So there are several that are countywide, the general fund, mosquito control, eels, and library services. So those are paid by all Brevard County taxpayers. So again, it just, there are a variety of factors. It depends on where, where you live.
Would more taxpayers have seen a decrease had the county not, should the county go ahead and not institute, again, the tax increase according to Florida Statute 200.065? Not all 76, but...
I would, I mean, I can understand that assumption, yes, depending on which, again, which millage rates were decreased.
Thank you. Follow-up. How many commercial properties holders will see a, or what percentage of commercial property holders will see a tax increase should we pass this budget that relies on a tax increase according to Florida Statute 200.065?
Unfortunately, I do not have that data. The data, we worked closely with the property appraisers office to get the data and analyze it the best we could, just isolating, again, those homesteaded exemptions. I don't have the data on the commercial properties.
I appreciate your office working diligently. I understand that many of these things were outside your control, and I appreciate you looking into that. One final question, and this is a little historic, and I realize you're newer to this position, but to the best of your knowledge, when was the last time that the Board of County Commission passed a budget that did not rely on either A, a tax increase under Florida Statute 200.065, B, busting the charter cap, which was passed by 74% of the citizens, or C, a combination of both?
Last year, the millages adopted by the board did not require a notice of proposed tax increase because the aggregate rate was below the rollback rate. However, it did exceed the charter cap. And before that, I would have to go back and review prior years.
Okay, so last year, my, what I looked up had, 2015 was a tax increase above the millage rate according to Florida Statute 200.065. You don't have that, unfortunately?
I could get it if...
That's, that's a, fine, I appreciate the help, and thank you for your indulgence, Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Pritchett has the floor.
Do you want comments now, or do you want to quit?
No.
Okay, just, I started pulling up an analysis of things going on around us, and I went ahead and I called the cities and found out who had to do tax cuts this year, and I got ahold of 13 of them. None of them had to increase their taxes this year to keep up with the growth in their communities, and four of them went to rollback. And none of them were able to do any tax cuts. And then I went through and I did an analysis between 2017 and 2007. That was right when that boom hit in our community. And from that period of time, it was the closest budget I could find to what we're trying to do now. And compared to 2007 and now, this budget is $65 million less than 2007. Our population is 45,000 more in people, and we have 400 less staff members trying to take care of the population, working on a lesser budget. I'm really impressed that we got a budget coming in like we do that was as creative as it is, and it really is a tax cut because people are paying less. Let me, let me explain this. There is 68.94% of people that are going to be paying less this year on their term notices. We have 7.4% that's going to be exactly the same as last year. There is 21.66% that's going to be paying between a penny more and $3 more per year. And then we have the other 2.37% that's going to be paying $5 or more per year. And this is really not related to the millage amount that we're levying, but this is directly correlated to property values, which we have no control over, that's driven by the market. So if your property values increase significantly, you're going to be paying more, which is a good thing when you go to sell your house, you get more money, but that's just the way it happens across the board. Not everybody's property values increased. So that's just something that happened is the year's end of what we're looking at. But I'm really proud of this budget and the job that you guys did and the work we did. I'm proud that we stopped the inventory going into reconstruction in the roads, and we're keeping up with the resurfacing. I'm proud that we got a 3.5% increase for the employees that haven't had an increase for a long period of time, and that's still a lot less than the value of the dollar is since that boom we went through, and we went through the Great Recession. And so I think we've done a really, really good job here. I'm going to be surprised if we're able to keep it this low next year, seeing the increase of the population we have coming in. But hopefully, with the growth coming in and the new businesses and the new properties coming in, there'll be more tax dollars generated to do the roads and keep the parks up and take care of all those things that are important to us with quality of life. And I want to thank you guys up here for working so hard and coming up with a very frugal, responsible budget, and good job, County Commission and staff.
Anyone else? Ms. Hayes, I have a question. All day, my office has been fielding questions. Well, why are you raising my taxes? And so my staff went about the process of explaining to them exactly what the stipulation is, and it's largely controlled by the fact that we have increased home values. But is it a fact that there's a $57 million decrease in spending?
The, the budget is decreased when compared to the current fiscal year budget. Now, that budget does include transfers, it includes balance forward, and a variety of other sources, so, but yes, when you look at the tentative adopted budget compared to the current budget, it is a $57 million decrease.
And the decrease in millage was how much?
In the aggregate, it is 4.2... Give me one second. Four...
4.02.
4.02, thank you, Frank.
Okay, so I guess the question people have then is, is this sleight of hand? Is this confusing? Is this, because one gentleman that called, he was just absolutely beside himself that we were going to raise his taxes. And so my staff looked up what he was paying, and he's actually paying $500 less this year than he did last year. So he said, well, then how can this be an increase in taxes? And, well, semantics make it an increase. But as we've already seen, by Mr. Tobias's own account, there's 76% of the people who actually are paying the same or less. That being said, this gentleman, we looked further, and this gentleman back in '06 or '07, I believe, he was paying $22,000 a year in property taxes. Now he's paying, I think, $11,000, something like that, and that $11,000 is $500 cheaper than it was last year. So you can try and paint this any way you want, but I think as, and I will reiterate what Commissioner Pritchett just said, we've worked very hard on this budget, we've put an awful lot of time and effort into this budget, we've taken into account all the folks that spoke to us at the budget workshops, we took into account all the community groups that spoke, the different organizations that spoke, and you're not going to make everybody happy. And there can always be somebody that wants to dance and jump up and down and stick their head in the ground and pretend they didn't hear anything, or they can't see anything, or they can be against it. But the fact is, we have the responsibility, each and every one of us, to do what we think is best for our district. And I know I've done what I think is best for my district, and I'm sure the other four commissioners feel the same way, even though we don't all agree. That's all I have to say. Commissioner Tobias, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just had a couple follow-ups to the questions that you posed to Ms. Hayes with your indulgence.
Sure, be my guest.
You mentioned that it was a $57 million decrease. Is, is it fair to say that the adopted budget and the final budget are completely different numbers?
The budget is amended for various reasons throughout the fiscal year, so...
Can you give me an estimate about how much it's amended? Or let me give you my, what I came up with through your office to see if it's a, pretty close. Between this year, the adopted to the final is going to be right around 10%. In other words, more than $100 million. Last year, it went up another $100 million, 10% it increased. Year before that, a slight increase of 3%. Year before that, the 13, 14, the difference between the adopted budget and the final budget was a 13% increase, another $100 million. So this is why the legislature in their brilliance was, of course, long before I got there, knew that local government played games. And I think you've just seen a sleight of hand up here. So let me ask you this question. Let me turn this $56 million tax cut into an 85, or sorry, $86 million tax increase by the same logic. If I was to compare last year's, or, sorry, the current year's adopted budget to this proposed budget, in other words, I'm comparing the beginning budget of last year to this proposed beginning budget, would I see that same $56 million cut, or would I in fact see an increase of 8.2% or $86,491,800, sorry, $483?
You would see that increase. That is actually, I believe, the numbers that we gave in the budget message. We shared both of those numbers, year to year, on the adopted budget, and then current year budget, which changes throughout the year from cash-forward projects that aren't completed, grants that are received, and that's the basis of anywhere between that 3% and 10% a year change in the budget during the budget year, but that would be accurate.
And manager, that's, that is outside your and the budgeting office's control. Is that, is that a fair assessment, that, that increase from the adopted to the final budget, largely outside of the control?
Yeah, we receive, you know, adjustments are made by departments based on projects that they may not be able to complete in one year, or at the end of the fiscal year, when county finance does the reconciliation to what actual estimates earlier, and we make all those adjustments, and we bring those back to the board for approval.
Thank you. So just going back to the question, because this is a lot of, you know, adopted, final, current, but comparing the last year's budget, the adopted budget, not with all the changes, to the proposed one, because we, it's a fair assessment that this one will go up sort of like the last ones. It is correct that the county will derive more than $86 million more from the adopted budget of fiscal year 1617 to the proposed budget of 1617. budget of fiscal year 16, 17 to the proposed budget of 17, 18. Is that $86 million more? Is that a fair assessment?
The adopted budget for fiscal year 2016, 2017 was $1,555 million. So actually, it's approximately $115 million when compared to the adopted.
Thank you.
Commissioner Pritchett, you have the floor.
Commissioner Tobias, I wish you'd said that out a little early so I'd have time for my accounting head to wrap around what you're asking on that. But I think I picked up some information, and I'm probably going to have to ask some more questions this week. If we have that type of an increase, we obviously can't go back and raise taxes real quick and collect more revenues. So for the budget to change by an amount through the year, I'm thinking it has to either be a carryforward of encumbered amounts, or I'm thinking that it's going to have to be revenue-driven like through whatever we have as enterprise funds. So there might be some changes there. But my thought is, just from looking at the past budget and things that we've even done our first year out, that we've actually done some budget changes and adjustments that have come before us. Correct? Because we can't just go out and grab more taxes. I mean, it has to come from somewhere.
That's correct. A big portion of it is adjusting the balance forward, which is done at mid-year supplement. And then also grants play a big part in amending the budget.
Okay.
Anytime the budget's amended, it does come before the board as a budget change request.
This year, we can add also 27-plus million of that difference was the half-cent sales tax for the...
Oh, yeah.
For the lagoon. So that would account for 27-plus, actually closer to 30 million, I believe.
And an example of one of the recent amendments that we had, there was a $50 million amendment, which was the refunding of local option fuel tax bonds, which was approved by the board earlier in the year. So we have to, Florida statute requires us to recognize that as revenue.
Okay. And then I'm thinking too, if we ever get FEMA funds this year, that's going to make like another big hunk of change. It looks like the adjustment changes next year too with funds from FEMA and taking care of money in and out. So I think, you know, you can give us that information during the week. But accounting-wise, I think that would be the changes and the differences of how the budget, that's not necessarily something sneaky is going on. It's just there's adjustments through the year as any entity has with funds coming in from grants and entities and roll-forwards. And I think they've made sense to me through the year. So, thank you.
Commissioner Zanardi, you have the floor.
I guess logic would say then, if it's several million dollars, that, you know, we have to make constant budget amendments. And I mean, we've done this at the city level. When we were council people, you make amendments throughout the year. But if we're talking tens of millions of dollars, you know, and this isn't really a question for you, but since you were the one talking is why I'm talking to you, is I don't understand why we couldn't have found another $1 million out of the budget to keep it at rollback. Because that would have been very easy to do if we're only talking $1 million. That wasn't really a question more than it was a statement, but...
Duly noted. Good point. Any other comments, thoughts? Okay, moving right along.
I believe for Agenda Item 1A4, we still need a motion...
Yes, we do.
For that resolution.
So I'll entertain a motion to approve the resolution in 1A4. We have a motion to approve. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. Anyone wish to vote no?
I do.
Pass is 3-2. No votes being Commissioner Tobias and Commissioner Zanardi. Okay, we'll look now at Agenda Item 1A5.
Mr. Chairman and members of the board, the Budget Office will read into the record resolutions establishing final millages for those dependent taxing districts for which the county levies a millage. There are six resolutions that will be read in succession. Following the reading of these resolutions, it is recommended that the chair entertain a motion for approval of all six resolutions.
A resolution to adopt a final millage pursuant to Chapter 200 Florida statutes authorizing the Board of County Commissioners to adopt the final millage for the Brevard Library District for fiscal year 2017, 2018 and providing an effective date. The Board of County Commissioners, Brevard County, Florida, is taxing authority for the Brevard Library District, does hereby levy the millage specified in Exhibit A. The fiscal year 2017, 2018 adopted millage of 0.4982 represents a 1.76% increase from the rollback rate of 0.4896, generating the adopted revenue of $17,318,895.
A resolution to adopt a final millage pursuant to Chapter 200 Florida statutes authorizing the Board of County Commissioners to adopt the final millage for the Brevard Mosquito Control for fiscal year 2017, 2018 and providing an effective date. The Board of County Commissioners, Brevard County, Florida, is taxing authority for the Brevard Mosquito Control District, does hereby levy the millage specified in Exhibit A. The fiscal year 2017, 2018 adopted millage for Brevard County Mosquito Control is 0.1968, which is a 1.76% increase from the rollback millage of 0.1934, generating $6,841,346.
A resolution to adopt a final millage pursuant to Chapter 200 Florida statutes authorizing the Board of County Commissioners to adopt the final millage for the Recreation District 4 Maintenance for fiscal year 2017, 2018 and providing an effective date. The Board of County Commissioners, Brevard County, Florida, is taxing authority for the Recreation District 4 Maintenance, does hereby levy the millage specified in Exhibit A. For the Recreation District 4 Maintenance, the fiscal year 2017, 2018 adopted millage is 0.7114, which is a 3.12% increase from the rollback rate of 0.6899, generating $2,623,905.
A resolution to adopt a final millage pursuant to Chapter 200 Florida statutes authorizing the Board of County Commissioners to adopt the final millage for the Tysseville-Coco Airport Authority for fiscal year 2017, 2018 and providing an effective date. The Board of County Commissioners, Brevard County, Florida, is taxing authority for the Tysseville-Coco Airport Authority, does hereby levy the millage specified in Exhibit A. For fiscal year 2017, 2018, the adopted millage for Tysseville-Coco Airport Authority is 0.0000, which is no change from the rollback rate of 0.000, generating $0.
A resolution to adopt a final millage pursuant to Chapter 200 Florida statutes authorizing the Board of County Commissioners to adopt the final millage for the South Brevard Recreation District for fiscal year 2017, 2018 and providing an effective date. The Board of County Commissioners, Brevard County, Florida, is taxing authority for the South Brevard Recreation District, does hereby levy the millage specified in Exhibit A. For the South Brevard Recreation District operating millage, the 17, 18 adopted millage is 0.2956, which is a 29.65% increase from the rollback millage of 0.2280, generating For the South Brevard Recreation District debt millage, the fiscal year 2017, 2018 adopted millage is 0.3044, which is a 7.22% decrease from the rollback millage of 0.3281, generating
A resolution to adopt a final millage pursuant to Chapter 200 Florida statutes authorizing the Board of County Commissioners to adopt the final millage from North Brevard Recreation District 1 for fiscal year 2017, 2018 and providing an effective date. The Board of County Commissioners, Brevard County, Florida, is taxing authority for the North Brevard Recreation District 1, does hereby levy the millage specified in Exhibit A. The North Brevard Recreation District 1 operating millage for fiscal year 2017, 2018 is 0.2230, which is a 28.68% increase from the rollback millage of 0.1733, generating $597,779. The North Brevard Recreation District 1 debt millage for fiscal year 2017, 2018 is 0.5770, which is a 0.4% decrease from the rollback millage of 0.5793, generating $1,553,119.
I will now entertain a motion to approve all the resolutions as read.
So moved.
We have a motion to approve. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Anyone wish to vote no? Pass is 5-0. We'll now go to Agenda Item 1A6.
Mr. Chairman and members of the board, for 1A6, the Budget Office will read into the record 11 resolutions establishing adopted budgets for the dependent districts of the county. These resolutions will be read in succession. Following the reading of these resolutions, it is recommended that the chair entertain a motion for approval of the 11 resolutions.
A resolution to adopt a final operating budget for the Brevard County Free Public Library District pursuant to Chapter 200 Florida statutes authorizing the Board of County Commissioners to adopt the final budget for fiscal year 2017, 2018 and providing an effective date. The Board of County Commissioners, Brevard County, Florida, is taxing authority for the Brevard County Free Public Library District, does hereby adopt a final operating budget as presented and amended at the public hearing held on September 26, 2017 for the fiscal year beginning October 1, 2017 and ending September 30, 2018 in the amount of $27,397,849.
A resolution to adopt a final operating budget for the Brevard Mosquito Control District pursuant to Chapter 200 Florida statutes authorizing the Board of County Commissioners to adopt the final budget for fiscal year 2017, 2018 and providing an effective date. The Board of County Commissioners, Brevard County, Florida, is taxing authority for the Brevard Mosquito Control District, does hereby adopt a final operating budget as presented and amended at the public hearing held September 26, 2017 for the fiscal year beginning October 1, 2017 and ending September 30, 2018 in the amount of $9,713,403.
A resolution to adopt a final operating budget for the Brevard County Recreation Special District 4 Operations and Maintenance pursuant to Chapter 200 Florida statutes authorizing the Board of County Commissioners to adopt the final budget for fiscal year 2017, 2018 and providing an effective date. The Board of County Commissioners, Brevard County, Florida, is taxing authority for the Brevard County Recreation Special District 4 Operations and Maintenance, does hereby adopt a final operating budget as presented and amended at the public hearing held on September 26, 2017 for the fiscal year beginning October 1, 2017 and ending September 30, 2018 in the amount of $2,622,125.
A resolution to adopt a final operating budget for the Tysseville-Coco Airport Authority pursuant to Chapter 200 Florida statutes authorizing the Board of County Commissioners to adopt the final budget for fiscal year 2017, 2018 and providing an effective date. The Board of County Commissioners, Brevard County, Florida, is taxing authority for the Tysseville-Coco Airport Authority, does hereby adopt a final operating budget as presented and amended at the public hearing held September 26, 2017 for the fiscal year beginning October 1, 2017 and ending September 30, 2018 in the amount of $2,558,265.
A resolution to adopt a final operating budget for the South Brevard Special Recreation District pursuant to Chapter 200 Florida statutes authorizing the Board of County Commissioners to adopt the final budget for fiscal year 2017, 2018 and providing an effective date. The Board of County Commissioners, Brevard County, Florida, is taxing authority for the South Brevard Special Recreation District, does hereby adopt a final operating budget as presented and amended at the public hearing held on September 26, 2017 for the fiscal year beginning October 1, 2017 and ending September 30, 2018 in the amount of $11,963,006.
A resolution to adopt a final operating budget for the North Brevard Recreation Special District pursuant to Chapter 200 Florida statutes authorizing the Board of County Commissioners to adopt the final budget for fiscal year 2017, 2018 and providing an effective date. The Board of County Commissioners, Brevard County, Florida, is taxing authority for the North Brevard Recreation Special District, does hereby adopt a final operating budget as presented and amended at the public hearing held on September 26, 2017 for the fiscal year beginning October 1, 2017 and ending September 30, 2018 in the amount of $2,150,898.
A resolution to adopt a final operating budget for the Merritt Island Redevelopment Agency pursuant to Chapter 200 Florida statutes authorizing the Board of County Commissioners to adopt the final budget for fiscal year 2017, 2018 and providing an effective date. The Board of County Commissioners, Brevard County, Florida, is taxing authority for the Merritt Island Redevelopment Agency, does hereby adopt a final operating budget as presented and amended at the public hearing held on September 26, 2017 for the fiscal year beginning October 1, 2017 and ending September 30, 2018 in the amount of $2,271,838.
A resolution to adopt a final operating budget for the Barefoot Bay Water and Sewer District pursuant to Chapter 200 Florida statutes authorizing the Board of County Commissioners to adopt the final budget for fiscal year 2017, 2018 and providing an effective date. The Board of County Commissioners, Brevard County, Florida, is taxing authority for the Barefoot Bay Water and Sewer District, does hereby adopt a final operating budget as presented and amended at the public hearing held September 26, 2017 for the fiscal year beginning October 1, 2017 and ending September 30, 2018 in the amount of $7,640,654.
A resolution to adopt a final operating budget for the Melbourne Tillman Water Control District pursuant to Chapter 200 Florida statutes authorizing the Board of County Commissioners to adopt the final budget for fiscal year 2017, 2018 and providing an effective date. The Board of County Commissioners, Brevard County, Florida, is taxing authority for the Melbourne Tillman Water Control District, does hereby adopt a final operating budget as presented and amended at the public hearing held on September 26, 2017 for the fiscal year beginning October 1, 2017 and ending September 30, 2018 in the amount of $4,449,127.
A resolution to adopt a final operating budget for the North Brevard Economic Development Zone pursuant to Chapter 200 Florida statutes authorizing the Board of County Commissioners to adopt the final budget for fiscal year 2017, 2018 and providing an effective date. The Board of County Commissioners, Brevard County, Florida, is taxing authority for the North Brevard Economic Development Zone, does hereby adopt a final operating budget as presented and amended at the public hearing held September 26, 2017 for the fiscal year beginning October 1, 2017 and ending September 30, 2018 in the amount of $3,275,565.
A resolution to adopt a final operating budget for the A. Max Brewer Memorial Law Library pursuant to Chapter 200 Florida statutes authorizing the Board of County Commissioners to adopt the final budget for fiscal year 2017, 2018 and providing an effective date. The Board of County Commissioners, Brevard County, Florida, is taxing authority for the A. Max Brewer Memorial Law Library, does hereby adopt a final operating budget as presented and amended at the public hearing held on September 26, 2017 for the fiscal year beginning October 1, 2017 and ending September 30, 2018 in the amount of $377,587.
Good job. Is everybody still awake? All right. Okay, I'll entertain a motion to approve all the resolutions as read.
So moved.
We have a motion to approve. Do we have a second?
We have a second.
We have a second. Anyone wishing to vote no?
No.
Pass is 4-1. The one no vote is Commissioner Zanardi. Agenda Item 1B.
Mr. Chairman and members of the board, for Item 1B, we request that the chair entertain a motion to authorize the county manager or designate to execute all forms, letters, and exhibits necessary to establish that Brevard County has complied with Section 200.065 and 218.63 Florida statutes, the truth in millage law.
I'll entertain a motion to authorize the county manager or designate to execute all forms, letters, and exhibits necessary to establish that Brevard County has complied with Sections 200.065 and 218.63 Florida statutes, the truth in millage law.
So moved.
We have a motion to approve. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Anyone wish to vote no? Pass is 5-0. I will entertain a motion to end the budget hearing script. I don't need one. Says I do. Okay, I just do what I'm told, guys. Okay, moving to new business. Is there any new business?
Yes, there are. We'll start with Item 4A.
Good evening. This is a request that you approve and authorize the Chairman to sign the State of Florida Department of Ag and Consumer Services annual certified budget for mosquito control. The document is prepared from the budget that you just approved.
So we have a motion to approve. We have a second. Fiscal year 2017-2018 annual state certified budget for mosquito control. Anyone wish to vote no? Pass is 5-0. Moving into board reports. Mr. Abate.
We still have two more items.
Which would be what?
Item 4B.
I don't have a 4B.
This is an interlocal agreement with the City of Melbourne for reimbursement for utility. Does anybody have it?
No.
Sally, do we have those items?
Does this mean we get to go home?
Yeah, the reason that we're here tonight is because it needs to get done before September 30. I can explain while Sally is bringing up. This is the, we did a stormwater improvement project that we refer to as the Kingsmill Aurora Stormwater Improvements. It benefits unincorporated area and additionally areas of the City of Melbourne. We have a JPA, a joint participation agreement with the City of Melbourne to participate in the cost of that project. In addition to that, we needed to relocate some city utilities that were in the right-of-way, that were in the way of that project. The city has offered to pay those utility relocation costs. So this is an interlocal agreement with the City of Melbourne that would reimburse the county for the utility relocation costs in our right-of-way necessary for that project. It would increase, it would provide a revenue to the county of $148,771.68. The reason that it needs to come tonight, instead of waiting until October 10 meeting, is that the city would like to make that reimbursement to us this fiscal year, but they can't do it without this agreement approved first.
Any questions for Ms. Barker?
So is there any fiscal impact to us?
A revenue of $148,771.68, which is a reimbursement for costs that we have already incurred this fiscal year.
Commissioner Tabia.
Thank you. Mr. Chair, is that the aggregate cost of moving those utilities, or is that a percentage of the total cost of?
It is, it is the total cost of the relocation of those utilities.
Yes, news to me, too, but 144 coming in is good news.
I make a motion to accept.
4B.
4B.
I have two more minutes.
You can. Any comments from the board while we're waiting?
I made a motion to accept it.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor by Commissioner Barfield to accept 4B. Do we have a second?
Second the motion.
We have a second by Commissioner Tabia. Anyone wish to vote no? Pass is 5-0.
Okay, next item is execution of an amendment to a grant that was a Water Management District-funded Oyster Reef Living Shoreline project. We had multiple workdays planned during the month of September that have had to be rescheduled due to the hurricane. The water levels remain too high in the lagoon right now to finish this project, and so the Water Management District has granted us a 60-day extension.
Pleasure, the board.
I make a motion. Will you execute the amendment?
Okay, sure, absolutely. Take your time, but hurry up. You good? Okay. I'll entertain a motion to approve. Commissioner Barfield makes the motion to approve 4C. Do we have a second? We have a second by Commissioner Zanardi. Anyone wish to vote no? Pass is 5-0.
Thank you.
Okay, do we have any other new business?
That's it.
Okay, good deal. All righty. Board reports. Mr. Abate.
I just wanted to, for my reports, to thank Jill, the Budget Office, all the directors, their staffs, and working very closely with me to get us through this budget cycle and everything that they did to make this as smooth a process as we could get it. So we appreciate the board's indulgence in giving us the opportunity to present this budget, and we look forward to moving forward in the upcoming fiscal year and carrying out everything that we have in there. So thank you very much.
Mr. Knox.
No report, Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Pritchett.
Yeah, just like to say, I'm excited we got our first budget done as a commission, and I'm excited for the new year coming forward, and it's a great day in Brevard County. And I'm looking forward to the days we have coming in ahead. We're in such a good location. All the companies are wanting to move here. People are moving back home, and I'm just so proud to be part of this community and this county, and I'm just so proud of all of our citizens and the way they've come through here in the last few years of hard times, and that's all I want to say.
Mr. Barfield.
No report.
Mr. Tabia.
No report, Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Zanardi.
I just want to say thank you to Jill and her staff, and thank you for putting up with me and my staff, and I'm sure other offices, and all your help, and I appreciate all that you do. And just because there may be some of us up here that vote against, you know, a certain millage or the budget, it's not because we don't appreciate everything that you do, and we understand that you take direction from us. Thank you very much.
And I would like to say here, here, to all the good things that were just said. I think this is a great time to be in Brevard County. I tell anybody that I speak to when I'm on my travels that if you want to come to a great place, pack your bags, because Brevard County is open for business. We welcome new businesses, and the growth here is looking like it could be exponential in the next few years. And I want to reiterate, staff, all of you, not just the budget staff, but everybody that worked so hard on this budget, and again, like I had said before, all the people that came forward and gave us ideas and their thoughts and their concerns, all of that went into consideration, and it was a lot of work. And even though we don't all agree on how it was put together, we made a concerted effort to get it done, and it is done, and now it's implemented. So, here, here, and thank you all so much, and God bless everybody. This meeting is adjourned.
The opinions expressed by any member of the public during any period of public comment do not necessarily reflect the views or opinions of the Board of County Commissioners of Brevard County, Florida, Space Coast Government Television, or the program sponsor, and are solely those of the presenter. The Board of County Commissioners of Brevard County, Florida, Space Coast Government Television, and the program sponsor hereby expressly disclaim any and all responsibility or liability or need defamatory or slanderous statements expressed by any member of the public during any such period.